Welcome to B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher along with Rich Hosford. B News reporters Tad Stefanak, Chris Flaherty and Robert Paris. Peter Brown with the weather, Jolie Atwood with the community calendar and Marge McDonald with senior news. Thank you for joining us. Burlington Public Schools have been made aware of three positive cases of COVID-19 in three different school buildings this week with two of the cases found in people who attended school. According to a letter from Superintendent Conti and Director of Public Health Susan Luminello, three students or staff members have tested positive to the virus. The cases were Francis Wyman, Pine Glen and Marshall Simons. According to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Guidelines, the infectious period for COVID-19 is two days prior to becoming symptomatic or if asymptomatic, two days prior to testing. The Board of Health determined that the case at Francis Wyman School did not attend school during their infectious period, therefore no additional action was needed. However, the cases at Pine Glen and Marshall Simons did attend school during the infectious period and it was necessary to determine who was in close proximity with the positive staff student during the infectious period. A close contact is defined as anyone within six feet of the affected individual for greater than 10 minutes. All students and staff members determined to be close contacts both through activities inside or outside of school were immediately contacted by the Board of Health and were required to quarantine. Testing was recommended for all close contacts however, any close contacts testing negative for COVID-19 must still complete quarantine requirements as issued by the Board of Health. The policy of Burlington Public Schools is to close any classroom when a student or staff member with a confirmed or probable case of COVID-19 is present in the classroom during their infectious period. Classrooms will be closed based on the last date of possible exposure and be no longer than two weeks. Prior to reopening classrooms, a thorough cleaning of the classroom and shared materials will be conducted. The Burlington School Department is facing a deficit due to the pandemic. Superintendent Eric Conti reported to the school committee on Tuesday that because of a lack of local receipts from things like meals and hotel taxes during the shutdown, the town is facing a $2.1 million projected deficit, not definite yet, could be more, in the FY21 budget passed in June. Some of that will be covered by a reduction in spending on accommodated accounts, but even after that, the town will be facing a $700,000 deficit. Again, this is projected, could be more, could be less. Superintendent Conti said that because the school budget is roughly 50% of the total fiscal budget, the expectation by town meeting is that the department will cut roughly $350,000 from its annual spending. Conti said they don't have to decide now which outline items to cut, as town meeting has, school committee has fiscal autonomy, and that they won't know how their final expenses will shake out until October. At that point, they can start making those decisions. He also said the department is receiving some federal aid to deal with the COVID-19, but that he doesn't want to use all of that to cover the deficit because the pandemic is causing them to spend money on personal protective equipment and other related expenses. The September town meeting will be a bit different than most sessions. Rather than going outside varsity field like they did in the spring, it will instead be a hybrid model with some people in the auditorium and some online. B News Director Rich Hosford spoke to a couple of people planning the meeting and has this report.
The chairs in the Burlington High School auditorium are mostly empty now, but next week they'll be home to town meeting members for the September session. Not all of them however, as most members will be joining the meeting online due to the coronavirus. Burlington Town Clerk Amy Warfield explains how it's going to work.
This September's town meeting is going to be a little different and unusual for us. We're going to be doing a hybrid meeting where we will have some people who will be remote using WebEx webinar and some people who are going to be in person in the auditorium. So we're going to be taking, those people will sign in just like they always do whether they're virtual or whether they're in person, and then we will be going down through each article one at a time and they will, town meeting members will be able to ask questions. If they're remote, we will be using the raise hands option. If they are present here, they will be going down to a central podium that will have a camera and a microphone and they will be able to ask their questions and then we will be moving the questions and voting on articles.
Who will be in person and who will be remote was left up to the members themselves and those who do come to the school have to abide by the safety precautions we are all so familiar with.
Well, we pretty much have let the town meeting members decide what they wanted to do. Those people who were comfortable with being virtual will be virtual. There are a number of people who maybe don't have a computer, don't have the kind of computer capacity, and so they've chosen to come here in person. And we will be doing social distancing. All the town meeting members will be sitting at least six feet away from each other. While they're here in the auditorium, they are going to be required to wear a mask and then as they come up front and ask their questions, we will be wiping down the computer, the microphones, those types of things.
Despite most people watching from home, there will still be presentations and members will be able to ask questions.
Yes, there will be the ability for presentations. We have a mixture. Some people have already pre-recorded their presentations, so that will be played and shown, and then the proponent will be able to be there to answer questions for the body, whether they're virtual or whether they're in person.
Town Moderator Bill Byer said he anticipates this meeting will work, but it will be a challenge on the technical side. He asks that everyone be patient.
Cut me some slack, you know, be nice to your neighbors and to me. I mean, this should work and it should feel an awful lot like a regular town meeting, but it's going to need cooperation from everybody who's involved.
Finally, town moderator Byer said despite the challenges, there are important issues that must be discussed and decided during this September session.
Well, there's some financial articles on the budget that need to get covered because those will be impacting the tax rate coming up. There's some zoning issues that the proponents have been very patient. They were ready to go in June, but because of the, we weren't sure how the June town meeting was going to work, we put it off till this meeting. So we really need to get those out of the way too. And then obviously there's a new position for the school department that's being brought up that is garnering a lot of attention and hopefully we'll get through that one too, but that could be troublesome.
From the Burlington High School Auditorium, I'm B News Director Rich Hosford.
If you've visited the Mill Pond Conservation Area recently, you may have noticed what seems like drastically low water levels in the reservoir, which is a main water source for the town of Burlington. B News spoke with DPW Director John Sanchez, who noted that the Mill Pond had even lower levels during the drought of 2016, and they are managing the reservoir as they routinely do. The DPW understands the demand and what they can produce. Sanchez explained the Mill Pond facility has three intake pipes, upper, middle and lower, and it has a buffer of stored water between the middle and lower intakes in case of an emergency. Burlington generally doesn't have to delve into the buffer and doesn't expect to this year. The reservoir typically uses the middle intake to service the town and manages the water so that by the end of the summer season, the water level stays above the middle intake. Currently, the water level is six feet above the middle intake, which is approximately 80 million gallons. Burlington's daily water use is roughly 3 million gallons a day, one and a half to two million coming from the Mill Pond and about one to one and a half million from the Vine Brook and the Great Meadow. Lack of rain this summer has been an issue and Sanchez is counting on seasonal rainfall. He said if rain doesn't come before the middle of October, then they will start to worry and hopefully for a very heavy snowfall this year. Conservation Administrator John Keely said the combination of drought and water withdrawals can severely impact aquatic habitats. At Mill Pond and in rivers in Massachusetts like the Ipswich River, sections dry up completely, doing the fish trapped there. While some predators like herons and raccoons enjoy easier access to prey trapped in the pools, the shallow oxygen depleted water often results in massive fish kills. Conserving water by using less to water lawns can help reduce the stress on our water resources. There also is an automatic ban on automated watering systems beginning into the 30th. Sanchez said that they have been diligent in monitoring the town's water supply and the outdoor watering restrictions have helped lower demand. Additionally, as I said, the Board of Selectmen recently voted for the full outdoor watering ban beginning Wednesday, September 30th. That will last through March 31 of 2021. Many methods and positions are pivoting in these untested times and Burlington schools are no different. With the Burlington Science Center's Sean Musselman becoming the new BPS Remote Academy Director, B News reporter Tad Stefanak has this report.
For obvious reasons, there's been a lot of shifts and changes in Burlington Public Schools and the Burlington Science Center's science specialist, Sean Musselman, is one of them.
It's a new position, as you can imagine, and we're kind of figuring it out as we go, but I'm in charge of the 30-plus educators that are responsible for the exclusively remote learning of our K-5 students for as long as it takes this year. Really for the past two, three weeks, we've really just been trying to get the remote academy up and running. There's been a lot of little bumps along the road. Of course, we have students entering the school district and/or switching to remote. Getting staff and class rosters aligned was stop one. Stop two is getting all of the devices of our remote learners from their home schools and getting them to a central location here at BPS in Area 123 where we're sitting right now. It's been turned into our distribution center where we moved iPads. Right now, we have boxes coming in from the different elementary schools with all of the markers and pencils and magnetic boards and different manipulatives that our students would traditionally use in the classroom that we're moving out into their homes.
B News asked Mr. Musselman how his new assignment will affect K-5's science education.
Science instruction in the classrooms is happening remotely after the lunch hour synchronously. So my partner Wendy Pavlicek and I are creating lessons that our classroom teachers are facilitating after the lunch hour, but in that remote Google Meet format. That science portion of the day is just one piece of the day. Those teachers are also responsible for 60 minutes of mathematics, 60 minutes of ELA time. They host a morning meeting just like they would in a traditional classroom, and there's also a chunk of time for social emotional learning. You know, what we're really focused on here in the first few weeks is getting to know the students, getting the materials in hand that they're going to need to be successful. I'll be communicating more and more as we continue going and we'll also be eliciting feedback from our parents and our community members around what is working well and what is, continues to be obstacles to learning because it's going to be a process all year long of learning and adapting. One thing's for sure, it's going to be a very different year than any year that I've experienced as a teacher here in Burlington or anywhere, but you know, I think all of our educators can say that as well. So I don't feel any different from them. We're just doing the best we can in our new roles and making it work for our students.
From the Burlington Science Center slash Burlington Public Schools Remote Academy, I'm B News reporter Tad Stefanak.
Scammers are using the economic crunch people are feeling due to the pandemic to try and steal their personal information. According to the FTC, the Federal Trade Commission, people have reported seeing messages on social media that seem to be from Pepsi, Walmart, Whole Foods, Experian Credit, Target and other big name brands. These messages all offer money to people who need it through grants, coupons, food support or other giveaways, but they're all fake and not from the companies at all. You might get this kind of a message in English or Spanish from a friend or contact, the FTC says. The message tells you to click a link to get your money. If you click, you might find a survey to take, or they might ask you to enter your name, address, phone number or other information, and they might ask you to forward the message to several friends to be eligible to collect. But what these messages are really doing is running a phishing scam to collect your information and your friends' information and possibly putting malware on your phone, tablet or computer if you click the link. There's no money to get and there's no help to be had, just scammers. It could have been a real friend who forwarded that message to you, but it could have been a scammer who hacked your friend's account. The FTC also has some tips if you receive such a message. Don't click on any links that could download malware, expose you to even more scams or add your phone number to a list which is sold to other scammers. Delete the messages and certainly don't share them. Call a friend who shared the message. Did they forward it to you? If not, tell them their account might have been hacked. If so, share this blog post with them. You already clicked or shared, run a security scan on your device to look for malware. On Friday, September 18th, members of the Arthur Murray Dance Studio in Burlington showed off their moves and routines in a special drive-in showcase. As one would expect, the location and the pandemic, this event was rather a unique one for the Arthur Murray community. B News Entertainment Reporter Chris Flaherty has this look.
All the world's a stage, or in Arthur Murray's case, a dance floor. On the night of Friday, September 18th, the studio held their first drive-in showcase.
Just like everybody else, we're adapting to new different things and for our students who wanted to provide something that they could look forward to, even in COVID, work towards their dance goals and still be able to, you know, have something to work towards in their dancing.
Whether in a studio or a parking lot, a showcase is a chance for Arthur Murray's students to strut their stuff and perform for their friends.
So our students on their personal lessons with their teachers prepared set routines to particular songs that they really enjoyed or they're passionate about and worked for a certain period of time to be able to perfect those and to feel more confident and to kind of master a goal or kind of a routine in preparation. I think everyone did awesome. You know, Nick, my other staff member and I and our interns, everybody's been working hard today to get everything set up and our judges and our emcee, it's really everyone worked as a team to make everything happen. And the students, we're so grateful for them because they keep us going and it's awesome to be able to have everybody in one place again.
Even in the time of COVID, there are still ways for us to be together and do what we love.
You know, everybody has been so isolated in COVID and dancing brings everybody together and this is the first big group that we've had since the start of the pandemic. So it's been awesome to see everybody in one place and really be able to enjoy each other's company and dance and it's just kind of priceless to see everybody doing what they love the most.
Until next time, this is Chris Flaherty with your B News Entertainment Buzz.
If you're thinking of showing off some of your moves, you might go up to the gazebo in the town common, which has a nice smooth concrete floor. Navigating in Massachusetts may get a little strange for longtime residents familiar with the current setup of the state's highway exits. Mass Department of Transportation said it will begin its statewide exit renumbering project this fall to meet federal highway administration requirements. Construction is scheduled to begin on this project in mid-October of this year and is anticipated to end in the summer of 2021. So what does this project mean? Looking at local examples, the I-95 128 exits for Burlington's Middlesex Turnpike Route 3 will change from 32 AB to 50 AB. Why? Who knows? The Burlington exit to Cambridge Street Route 3A will change from 33 AB to 51 AB. Virtual public meetings will be scheduled throughout the fall to cover the rest of the impacted corridors. Project updates and corridor specific construction schedules will be posted regularly on the project's website, which you can find on our website at bcattv.org/bnews. Burlington High School Senior Sydney Shinopoulos is the newest member of the 2021 MIAA Student Advisory Committee. B News reporter Robert Paris spoke with her and has this report.
The Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association has been working harder than ever to allow athletes from around the Commonwealth to return to the playing field. Each year, students are selected by the MIAA to become a part of the Students Advisory Committee and one Burlington High School student was selected to be a part of it, Sydney Shinopoulos.
It was really cool. I felt very achieved, like accomplished because it's something that's really big around here and just be something that's really bigger than myself. Not many people from around here have been selected to be in that. It's just really cool to be a part of something bigger than myself and be with so many like-minded people.
Members of the student board get to arrange special meetings to help athletes focus on leadership.
Recently, we met with Deb and Dana Halt, who usually come here for mentor training and we led a leadership conference and really helped people around Massachusetts and student athletes work on their leadership skills.
Although the school environment is different, everyone is looking for the silver lining in the near future.
It's definitely different, but I think that just like leadership and kind of encouraging everyone that, you know, it'll be all right and that, you know, we're still able to play the sports we're able to play and we're still able to be in school, which is really nice.
From Burlington High School, I'm Robert Paris for B News Sports.
Many migrating birds often make pit stops along their flyway at Mill Pond Reservoir and Horn Pond, making the area a great place to see some avian visitors on their way to their wintering grounds. In this edition of B News Eye on Nature, we look at fall bird watching. Let's check it out.
People are out and on the move again, as is the migrating bird population, making autumn a prime time for bird watching at Mill Pond Reservoir and nearby Horn Pond in Woburn.
In the fall, birds start heading south towards their wintering grounds. So we get a lot more species in September than you would in the summertime. We have a lot of nice birds that breed in Massachusetts, but there's also a lot of birds that breed further north and they pass through here in the spring and the fall. In the spring, it's probably a little more exciting because they're more colorful. In the fall, they've changed their plumage and there are quite a few species are much duller and harder to identify in the fall and in the spring, they're singing all the time. In the fall, they tend to migrate quietly. So birding in the fall is challenging, but it's also rewarding because you see a lot of birds that you don't see in the summertime or in the wintertime.
Drastically reduced water levels at Mill and Horn Pond are no deterrent for migrating flocks.
I mean, the ducks and geese and shorebirds that migrate, they're going to come to the reservoir, you know. If it happens to be on their way and they're migrating and they're looking for a place to stop, this is, and as inviting as if the water was higher. When the water gets low, fish and frogs and whatnot tend to get concentrated in pools and it makes it easier for predators to hunt them because they're more concentrated in smaller areas. But then eventually, if you have enough fish kill, it affects the population of the river and it could take years for it to bounce back. So that's the effect of drought and also water withdrawals. A lot of towns, towns get their water from rivers or from wells near rivers and it causes them to dry up.
Autumn birding is a great way to get back out there and an even better way to keep an eye on nature.
We go now to B News Weatherman Peter Brown for a look at what's in store for the week ahead. We'll also check out the community calendar with Jolie Atwood to see what's happening in Burlington.
Well, hello everyone. This is Peter Brown with a look at your weather for the next seven days. I know it's hard to believe that we are now officially on the meteorological calendar and on our regular calendars in the season of autumn. We are now looking at summer in the rearview mirror, unfortunately for those of us who love the warm weather. But as we started our period in our almanac on Friday, it looks like we're going to be seeing some really nice temperatures, way up in the 70s and near 80, which is almost 10 degrees above our average at this time of the year, which should only be in the upper 60s. And those nighttime lows are going to be much warmer than we've been seeing in the Burlington area over the past few days. We've seen a lot of frost on a lot of cars and a lot of the pumpkins out there. So that's a sign that fall is definitely here to stay. As we round out our period, I know, look at that, October 1st, our, we should be seeing temperatures in the mid and upper 60s at that time of the year. And it looks like we're going to see a bit of a cooldown again as we start out October at the end of our periods. We'll have to see how that materializes and see how cool it gets. And as you notice, of course, the daylight now is actually shorter than the amount of nighttime we have by a minute as we start our period on Friday. So that is definitely a sign of the times. Now, as we go ahead, let's take a look at what the Climate Prediction Center is calling for us in terms of temperatures and precipice over the next seven days. Temperatures, really nothing surprising there. They're expecting for us here in the Burlington area and all of actually the eastern United States to see at or above average temperatures for the next seven days or so. Again, that's something we saw most of the time during the summer. Looks like that's going to be holding true as we look at our period. Now, as we go ahead and take a look at our precip chances, this is something that I'm a little bit skeptical of. I'm not sure where they're really seeing our chances of above average precipitation coming from. That may be dependent on what we call a cutoff low, perhaps forming over the Great Lakes, which is a low pressure center that gets cut off from the jet stream. These are very common in the spring and fall seasons. They can bring some beneficial rain, but usually you have to be fairly close to the center of it to get anything really appreciable. And it doesn't look like New England is going to be falling into that. In fact, parts of southeastern Massachusetts and most of Rhode Island now have actually fallen into an exceptional drought category. So that is definitely going to be the norm as we continue on. Now, let's take a look at some of those temps and precipice and that great weather we have coming up for the next seven days. Again, starting out our period on Friday and Saturday and Sunday, if you have some plans outside for this weekend, you are in luck. Temperatures way up in the 70s and near 80, just a beautiful weekend out there for the last weekend of September. As we start out our work week on Monday, temperatures again going to be above average, around 70, and we're going to see that continue until we get to really Wednesday where the temperatures start to cool back down and we may see temperatures only in the low 60s by next Thursday. Again, I've put the chance of some precipitation in there, all dependent on that cutoff low toward west being in place, but again, it doesn't look like we're going to be getting anything really measurable out of that. So it looks like the severe drought that we've been seeing in the Burlington area is going to continue for the foreseeable future, unfortunately. So everyone, get out there, enjoy the weather and have a great week.
Hi, I'm Jolie Atwood and this is your community calendar. Let's take a look at another conversation about social justice. On Tuesday, September 29th at 7:00 PM, the Burlington Public Library will be having a Zoom event called "I'm a Good Person, Isn't That Enough?" with Debbie Irving. Everyone is welcome to attend virtually and pre-registration is required. Sign up at Burlington.org. It is time to make a difference in the world around us. The Burlington Girl Scouts have an exciting opportunity for girls in town to learn more about Girl Scouting and become part of an amazing worldwide organization. If you're interested in learning more, email girlscoutsburlingtonma@gmail.com. Come and learn some English. English at Large is providing free online English beginner classes. The class is free, but pre-registration is required. Classes begin on October Mondays and Wednesdays from 7 to 8:00 PM. To sign up, go to EnglishAtLarge.org or call 781-395-2374. I'm Jolie Atwood and that was your community calendar.
Despite being closed due to the pandemic, the senior center is still offering a variety of programs and methods of support. For all the latest, we go to Council on Aging Director Marge McDonald for the latest senior news.
Hello. I have a couple important updates for you besides activities that we are doing that also have been caused by the pandemic. In case you haven't already heard, the deadline for the census has been moved up to September 30th. This is huge in a number of ways, from how we are funded, to how the districts for our elected officials are drawn up, to a whole number of other ways that affect healthcare, housing and other issues that directly impact all of our lives. If you haven't already, please send in your form or call the COA for assistance in filling it out. We can help you over the phone to fill it out online. If someone from the Census Bureau comes to your door, meet with them outside, but just please make sure you are counted. The second issue, the IRS closed their doors when we did and their mail, such as returns and checks, were not opened and are just sitting there. The IRS has started paying interest on refunds that were paid late. So some taxpayers might get a refund for more than expected. The IRS has indicated that the interest will be taxable income and a 1099 for interest will be issued for tax year 2020. For those of you that owed money and sent in a check rather than paying online, the IRS computers are still working, so they have e-filed returns, but don't know they have the checks. So they're sending letters to the taxpayers saying they didn't pay and adding penalties and interest. It's important that if you receive one of these letters, you don't put a stop payment on the check. It should all be worked out as the IRS cashes the checks received. Just check your bank account and respond to any IRS letters. We are still under Governor Baker's, safer at home for those 65 and over, and Town Hall hasn't fully reopened, so we have no plans to reopen for the foreseeable future. However, we are able to meet with people one-on-one, either outside or inside socially distanced. If you haven't gotten online and would like to and need help doing it, reach out to us and we'll help you get online, get on activities with us or just be able to Zoom with your family when you're free. Get on activities with us, or just be able to Zoom with your family when the cold weather returns, and we all isolate again because we can no longer be outside with friends and family. Burlington Rotary continues to provide volunteers from the high school to help us help you. We are continuing with our Tuesday morning coffee hours, but we are adding an afternoon one as well called High Tea or High Ball. Just a catchy name for essentially the same thing as Tuesday mornings. For October, we'll have it on the 7th at 4:00 PM. It may change from month to month as my schedule allows, but we have heard a lot of feedback from folks that 9:00 AM is just too early. So we thought we'd also try late afternoon. John Clark returns with his music lectures. In October, he concentrates on 1950s jazz and the first decade of Motown. I will email the link to join each one. As always, if you want to join by phone, please call and let me know. That's all for now. I'm Marge McDonald, and I hope to see you in our virtual senior center.
As this isolation drags on, the most at-risk group in the town is our super seniors, those in the 80s and 90s. So if you have an opportunity, if you know of anybody in that age group in your neighborhood, you might want to keep an eye on them, touch base, have some communication, just so they don't feel they're all by themselves. Another week, another photo to highlight. This week's photo was a beautiful shot of nature that, if you look carefully, also has a hint of what's to come. It was sent in by Phyllis Neufeld, and shows sunlight poking through the branches of a tree at Horn Pond. Hardly noticeable, a couple of the leaves caught in the sunlight are showing signs of turning reddish. Oh, no, a sign of fall. Thank you for the photo, Phyllis. We'd like to see your photos. They could be of your summer activities, a family trip, if you're taking any, or just everyday moments, whatever you think is interesting and want to share with us and the community. Email your photo to bcatt@bcattv.org with the subject line "Photo of the Week." Okay, that's it from the news desk here at B News Weekly. I'm Phil Gallagher, along with B News Director Rich Hosford, B News reporters Tad Stefanek, Chris Flaherty, and Robert Paris, Peter Brown with the weather, Julie Atwood with the community calendar, and Marge McDonald with senior news. Thank you for joining us.